Thank you.
I call to order the special meeting of the Glendale City Council for December 17, 2019. May we have roll call?
Council members, Devine.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
August Janion.
President.
Mayor Najarian.
Here. May we have your report?
The agenda for December 17, 2019, special public meeting of the city council was posted on Thursday, December 12, 2019, on the bulletin board outside city.
Thank you. What's the first item?
Director of Community Development regarding art and entertainment district design and technical development. One A is a motion to adopt design, technical development, and authorize staff to advance Phase Three instruction documents, permit of this contract. B is a motion to authorize commission of three public art pieces. And in addition to that, item number two on this agenda is Director of Community Development regarding 515 through 523 North Central Avenue, Stage One Design Review, case number PDR 1922924. Two A is a motion approving Stage One Design.
Thank you. Ms. Beers.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. We have been before the city council on this item, the Artsakh Avenue, urban design and place making, a minimum of three times, but in particular as it relates to this contract, Phase One and Phase Two, and reporting on this Phase Two piece. Depending on council's feedback and recommendation this afternoon, we would recommend moving into Phase Three to give you the background and take you through the presentation. Ms. Hiramoto from Economic Development will do so, and she'll also introduce others who will be speaking on this item. Ms. Hiramoto?
Great. Ms. Beers, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, and members of council. We are happy to update you with the latest on the Arts and Entertainment District, and I'm happy to say we're right on schedule as well. The last time you saw this item was in August, and you gave us direction to pursue the design and technical development for the district. Really, over the past few months, this has been a question of, will the one-way work? And I'm happy to report out that, yes, it does. So today, we will have some updates on the drawings for the street improvements, the site grading, the lighting plan, hardscape and lighting plans, and the public art strategy, which, as you know, is a big, big component of the Arts and Entertainment District. So just to recap here, we last met in August. Since then, we've also had several stakeholder interviews with the Arts and Culture Commission and have hosted a community open house. Some of that has included Glendale Arts and the Downtown Glendale Association as well, who have each said that they are fully in support of this. And we have had follow-up meetings as well with the city departments, including police, fire, Public Works, Water, and Power. So here to walk you through some of the updates will be Bradley Calvert, our Assistant Director, and later you will hear from our consultant, Alan Pullman of Studio 111. So without further ado, I would like to bring up Bradley Calvert.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, the PowerPoint is actually the booklet that you received, so we'll be going through this booklet as each speaker takes you through.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of city council. As mentioned, council has directed us to move forward with the one-way option. So before we get into some of those details that Ms. Hiramoto discussed, such as lighting and landscaping, we'd like to go through the design one more time. There's a few details and nuances that we had worked out. You'll see kind of a finer grain of detail as part of this design as well. One of the big things that we really worked with here was to make sure that the spaces that we were designing and creating are actually functional for some of the programming elements that we would like to see happen there or could potentially happen. So the first slide here, this is showing the existing conditions. North and all of the planned slides will be to the right side of the page. Right now, we have that temporary plaza that we've created. It's a two-way in on both the north and south side of the north block to access the parking garage. Southern block is also currently two-way in as well, both directions. And if you recall, this is the -- apologies, wrong picture there. There we go. This is the proposed improvements to be made, and a lot of this is focused on creating these pockets of open space, these extensions of the sidewalks to create areas for kind of gathering, for programming and activation, and it's converting it into that one-way street. So what we'd like to do is zoom in on each of these blocks, look at some of those details, look at how those spaces can be used and programmed. So the northern portion of the block, this is where we are looking at creating that one-way with that central plaza. On a non-event day, this center plaza would be open for traffic to move through on the east side of that. On event days, that center portion could be closed so that we could have a large plaza, a large open surface. It would be raised up to the street level to be flushed with the adjacent curb so that we would have this continuous seamless surface to be used for programming and activation. This would be the one location where you would see some new material integrated into that as well. We've discussed before that this is an opportunity for us to potentially use that as a canvas for art, whether that be some sort of application to that new paving that's there, something that would help kind of enliven and brighten that. If we zoom in on this a little bit more, this is the center plaza. You can see how that western sidewalk has been extended outward. This is the area that, on non-event days, would always have an opportunity to be activated. Seating would be incorporated in here, other aspects to encourage people to gather and linger and stay. And these next several slides really show how we could activate that space. In this case, we're looking at maybe an outdoor activation through some sort of yoga or some sort of other event, but again, we were really trying to make sure that the spaces that we were creating would be able to have a capacity to hold some sort of event. And in this case, the design team looked at, you know, could we do an outdoor yoga class? And in this case, about 25 seats could fit into that. Another example would be, it's a little slow, if we had some sort of farmer's market or some sort of art market that could occur here. And this example is showing that that one-way street being closed off and that plaza being open entirely to pedestrians, entirely to users, traffic would not be allowed to pass through at that point. But you can see there's a lot of opportunity to fit in, whether they're tents or there's some sort of stations for a farmer's market or any other sort of kind of event or gallery that could occur there. This is a section looking through the existing conditions. You can see right now the traffic moving both ways. This would be the proposed condition through the plaza. You can see traffic moving only southbound in this. One of the key features as part of that outdoor seating area, that extended sidewalk, would be to have some sort of overhead weather protection, so that, you know, providing opportunities for shade, shadow. It has been raised, the question has been raised whether or not that could be extended even further, and that is something that we'll continue to look into as we move through this design process. But this is a great opportunity for us to have kind of an iconic piece there that would create a shade structure for that permanent seating area. The southern block is one where we are really extending that amount of public space that is there. If you recall, this is where that street would make a bit of a curve or what we would call a chicane in order to try to slow traffic through there, to make sure that it doesn't come moving through fast, being that we do want to make this into a pedestrian-activated zone, pedestrian area. If we zoom in on this, you can see that this is the central plaza space, gathering space, if you will. This is where we are creating the most amount of space, really extending that sidewalk out. This is a great opportunity, and you'll see in several of the images, that we can create platforms, stages, performance areas, larger seating areas than we had in the northern block, as we'll discuss a little bit later. This is also a great opportunity for us to incorporate a large-scale art installation as part of this because we're creating that most amount of space right here. This is about one of three extensions that you will see. You also notice that coming out of that parking garage over here, one of the concerns expressed in one of the last meetings was if traffic would try to turn right coming out of that garage. So you can see that this intersection, this corner here, has been bulled out a bit more to discourage that kind of behavior, to discourage that movement, again, guiding drivers out of that garage to make sure that they do turn left.
Bradley, can I ask about the palm trees, the median? Is that staying in place? I only see a few of them.
Correct. The existing palm trees will stay in place. They will remain. And later in the presentation, we'll walk through some of the landscaping that'll occur there as well.
Mr. Quintero?
You've -- you're sure that the loading and offloading of semis is going to work?
Actually, you have a slide coming up in just a moment that demonstrates that both fire trucks and the loading of trucks can occur safely in this area. In this example, you can see this is kind of an open performance. If we were to have some sort of stage or platform there that could host music or plays or some sort of other art activation, kind of informal gathering, non-seating, this could be a busker that's performing here, but this can accommodate a pretty large amount of people. This is a really good opportunity for us to really activate that southern block. If you remember, there's not a lot of storefronts kind of activating that stretch, so the more space and more reason we can give people to spend time there, the more successful this area would be. In this example, you can see that this is a little more of a formal performance. You can see a stage and then seating directly behind it. Another good opportunity for us to be able to activate that space in a new way and really let that become kind of a performance venue, if you will. And this slide here, Councilmember Quintero addresses that movement of the trucks. You can see here on the southern portion, that's an example of a fire truck being able to move through that space. It is able to accommodate all of the turning radii, the curves that are there. It is able to move through there safely and efficiently. If you look on the northern portion, you can see the turning movements for semi-trucks to be able to load and unload. There's a loading dock in that northern portion of this southern segment, so we were able to make sure that those bulbouts that you see from those extensions of the public space of the sidewalk can still accommodate the movement of those trucks.
Mr. Garpetian?
Yes. In front of Home Goods, nowadays, people double park or just park really quick for five minutes to pick up their -- is this street wide enough to handle that? Is it going to be the same way?
Going to back up just a bit on these slides so that you can see where we have a little bit of a curb bulbout right here across from the large central space that's been created. Essentially, this is an area that people could pull into and load and unload, so we've been able to preserve that area.
There is a temporary loading and unloading for small cars to pick up a chair or have you to purchase. Okay, thank you.
This is a section through the existing conditions. You can see both traffic going northbound and southbound, two lanes currently. This is the extension of that public realm, bringing that down to that one-way direction coming south. There is a pocket of space there that preserves an opportunity for those to be able to pull over and pick up drop-off at the Home Goods that's there. But you can really see how much open space that we do get from here. This is, again, an opportunity for us to have a stage or a platform in there. There could be decorative furnishings, kiosks, a number of different things can occur in this space, and this is a really great opportunity to really activate that southern segment. Also pictured here, you can see, and we'll talk about these in a moment, as part of the three critical kind of art pieces that we would be looking for feedback on, some sort of overhead installation that really kind of frames that public space, really treats that as kind of a public living room, if you will. The public alley, this is the one that runs parallel to Artsakh. This is, we haven't really addressed it in prior presentations, and we're really focused on those big moves that we would be making on Artsakh, but there are great opportunities in this alley as well to help activate that, to be able to encourage people to move through this space, to connect to the Arts and Entertainment District, and also to connect through to get to brand. Some of the improvements that we've been looking at here, if you look at both the northern and the southern portion of that alley, to be able to have some sort of art installations on the pavement. This is a great chance to be able to pull people in since those are, you know, out on the peripheries, on the edge there at Wilson and Broadway, but to be able to create a design on that pavement that would encourage people to come into the alley, especially if we were to have some sort of event there. We would have overhead lighting that would string across. You can also see that in the alley that runs east-west that connects between both Artsakh and the alley. And then a refresh of the landscaping. And again, we'll go through some of that landscape in a little bit later, but right now, there currently are planners in there that could use a little bit of refreshing. There are also opportunities where the buildings step back a little bit, and we can put more vegetation in there to help green that up. Again, this does still need to remain as a functional alley, so all of these design considerations do consider the fact that trucks will still have to move through there at certain points, but when we do want to have some sort of event, we do want to activate it, we feel that some of these elements can really help kind of bring that to life. This is an existing section of that alley. One of the buildings here actually has a little bit of a rooftop terrace, if you will. What we've looked at, you can see the lighting that's here, an opportunity to have identity branding signage through that alley. We'll also cover that a little bit later and what those styles could look like and where they could go. You can see the refresh of the landscaping. If it's possible, if we can work with the tenants that are there to be able to try to activate that space and turn that into some sort of outdoor seating or dining, that's a great opportunity. And then having some sort of rotational art installations on any of the blank walls that we may have, similar to what we're looking at on the street surfaces there. Again, give it a pop of color, give it a little bit of life, draw people in. So public art and programming, as mentioned, this is one of the pieces that we would really be looking for council direction and feedback on. While we recognize the fact that art could kind of be sprinkled throughout this entire Arts and Entertainment District, we will need some big moves to occur, primarily to help identify the area, to brand the area, but also those kind of first moves that let people know that this is a serious Arts and Entertainment District for us. What we've identified are three locations, and the first is this overhead art piece, this opportunity on that southern portion of the block to extend cables across to the buildings, and we've used examples of the umbrellas that are hanging down, but there's a number of different things that could also occur there, but having that opportunity to be able to install some sort of overhead art installation. The second would be some sort of large sculptural piece, and that's here in the northern portion of that largest open space we're creating on this block. Again, something iconic, something that really stands out, something that can really grab attention and really create that atmosphere, this is an Arts and Entertainment District, and that will be located in that larger plaza. And then going to the far northern portion of the southern block, a gateway signage would be that third move. Again, something that is an identifier, something that brands the district. This location for this has specifically been chosen because that would be facing on Broadway. That's the busiest of the streets that frame the Arts and Entertainment District, so being able to use that gateway signage as a means to capture that attention, to lure people in who will want to come into that space. Now, we have concentrated these three pieces all in the southern block, and there's a couple of reasons for that. First off, this is where we're creating the most amount of open space in the southern portion. If you recall, in the northern block, that is a space that is functional but also transitional. It will not always be a large plaza, it will not be as large as the one that we are proposing here in the southern portion, so there's more room, there's more opportunity to do that. Secondly, the southern portion also is absent of things to really activate it right now. We already have some storefronts that are activated on the northern block. We do have the theater across the street that can also draw people in. We have opportunities to activate those storefronts in the future, so there are already pieces in place to really, there's a foundation in place really to activate that. So we felt it would be important and necessary to really put a lot of emphasis on that southern block and use these three kind of large art moves to really gravitate people to the area, to really activate the area, and start to give it its identity and brand. From here, I would like to turn this over, unless council has any questions on this segment, to our consultant, Alan Pullman, and he's going to go through some of the details of signage and vegetation.
Okay, looks like we're good. Alan.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and council members. It's great to be back. I'm Alan Pullman with Studio 111. I was going to go walk through a couple of the details of the plan at a very high level, and hopefully you'll have some, be able to give us some feedback on that. Programming is really, programming is an important part of our plan. It's not just making fiscal improvements, it's making sure that people are attracted to the place and going to be actively using Artsakh as the core of the Arts and Entertainment District. So this diagram that we put together with our consultant, Community Arts Resources, just diagrams what a sample programming of a day could be, and starts from early morning, it could be yoga and breakfast on Artsakh to outdoor office meetings, going through lunch and maybe an afternoon of a show, workshops, a market, and then dinner, and then ending with some sort of performance or visiting a performance and a late-night walk with your dog. So really, it's a sample. If you choose to go forward with the project, we'll flesh these programming concepts out more as we develop the plan, but you could see, this is a program that's going to be attractive to residents. It's also going to, not just residents of downtown, but throughout the city, they'll find things to do on Artsakh as well as regional visitors. So this is really an important part of the plan, and the next diagram really just shows where some of these elements could be diagrammatically on the street. Everything from play zones and outdoor dining to art elements, places for community events like yoga, farmer's market. We really want to make sure that this project activates any underutilized retail storefronts and includes art. This is the head, this is the heart of the Arts and Entertainment District, and we want to make sure that there are a lot of places for art in the project, not just the three locations of key art that we talked about. Our plan also has locations for landscape and street furnishings. We have a complete landscape plan. We've gotten the palette of plants from Central Park, so we want this to have a relationship so there's continuity in the downtown. I want to say that our plan does keep every single tree on the street, as well as, actually, we're adding one palm tree because we thought there was some symmetry, but every street has maintained all the street trees, and we heard that from council, work with what you have there. The diagram here shows that we want to have interactive, interesting kind of furnishings, vibrant landscaping, again, existing trees to remain. Shade is really important. It gets hot, it's getting hotter. We know that shade is a really important element to making a very comfortable outdoor space. We also have sculptural seating, built-in seat walls, modular seating throughout the project. Our plan also talks about lighting. Without getting into too detail, too much detail, what we're trying to do is really enhance the lighting on the street. Every urban, and we've all traveled around the world and we go to these beautiful urban settings, lighting at night is such an important part of making a space attractive and usable. Right now, the lighting is very functional on Artsakh, but we think we can make it better. There's some very utilitarian traffic lights. We actually think that our plan will get rid of those and supplement that with landscape lighting, cantonary lighting, that's a warmer color. We currently have two different kind of light poles. The north block has the acorns, the south block has a different type of light. We're going to make it a uniform light. We're going to use the acorns throughout the entire street so there's continuity on the street, and then festoon lighting and other kind of lighting that's really attractive and makes a dynamic nighttime scene. These images on this next slide just show an example of how the landscape lighting, we think we could do much more, if we're going to keep the trees, let's really light them up and make them elements of greatness on the street, uplining some of the buildings are part of our plan, lighting in the trees, as well as decorative lighting on all the surfaces. Again, we think this is going to really make the street much more attractive in the evening when we want it to be used. Another element of our plan is signage and wayfinding. We've started to locate where we think some of the signage elements go, and the plan I have on the screen right now starts to indicate some of those locations, and we've started to envision what these signs could look like. These are just concepts, they're not final designs, so we're looking forward to your input on that, but we have signs both on brand because we feel like Artsakh does not have the identity it needs to have, and the big overhead signage element will give it a lot more identity, but even for pedestrians walking on brand, they need to know that there's a destination on Artsakh. So we have some of the signs on brand and then signs throughout Artsakh, both standing signs, monument signs, some signs actually on the pavement. So some of the signage types are what we call a district marker, which would be a standing sign that would indicate some of the locations and destinations in the area and give an identity to the street. And then we have artistic monument signs, and these are really meant to be very artful, different, unique, actually, to give this street an identity that's different than the rest of downtown, to give it a sort of a certain kind of pizzazz, I suppose, and something that we think is interesting. We'd like to hear your feedback on that, but these are meant to be very artistic signage concepts, and not really about readability, but really about more kind of sort of overall identity for the street. We have some wall signs. These signs here actually, we think, could give the alley a certain identity. If you go to some of the great alleys around the world, you'll see some really interesting signage on them, and we were playing with the idea of using the word Artsakh or even calling it the artery, emphasis on art, as another idea, branding it somehow as a special place within this district, this particular alley. And lastly, we have some ground directional wayfinding signs as people walk, really directing them to different destinations in the district, whether it's the library, Brand Boulevard, the Alex Theater. We will still develop this a little bit more, but really giving people an idea of where they are and other destinations they could visit. So those are just a little detail of some of the elements that we have within our plan. As we've been working, we've been costing our project, so we've had a cost estimate working with us. Currently, if you look at the street improvements, the alley improvements, and some allowance to enhance the passageways that connect Artsakh to Brand Boulevard, we're about $7.4 million in our budget. That includes a 15% contingency. We also have some numbers that are allowances for the iconic art elements, programming for the first year, and we talked about some of the programming concepts, and basically an allowance for upkeep and ground maintenance that's enhanced above what's currently being done. So that's really trying to tie into the whole cost implications of this project together. So what I'd like to do is turn it back over to Jennifer Hiramoto, and she's going to kind of turn it up.
Alan?
I have a quick question. How would you describe acorn lighting? When I looked, I didn't see.
That is a good question. So the acorn lights, I'll just go back here to my lighting slide.
Those are also historical lights, right?
Yeah, you can see, let's see, does this work? That's the acorn light.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it exists, I call it an acorn kind of acorn shape, and so that's on the north block, and we want to extend it to the south block as well. Before I turn back to Jennifer, any other questions?
I have some questions with that.
Okay, thank you.
Jennifer.
Okay, well, my final comments here, as far as next steps go, here's what you can expect. So we are hoping to receive council authorization today to move forward with Phase Three, which would include the construction documentation preparation, and also authorization and a motion from council to move forward with those three art pieces that we spoke about and those locations, and from here, we will work with the Arts and Culture Commission on the, to commission those pieces. Estimated timeline, it's somewhat different than in your booklet. In your booklet is the economic development version. This is a more realistic timeline, so we would move forward in beginning with the construction document preparation in January. Hopefully, as you can see, we would move forward in January, or excuse me, in March. We would like to come back to council and discuss the plan for those retail units. If you recall, we, the city does own those eight retail units. This is an important part of this strategy as well, so we would like to get council direction on how to move forward with those. In April, we'd move forward with the construction document preparation. In October, move forward with the permitting, initiate the public bid process, and ultimately start construction in March of 2021 and have a construction complete by spring or summer of 2022. And of course, if we can move as fast as we can on this, we absolutely will. So with that, that concludes our portion of the presentation. We, Bradley, Studio 111, or myself, are available for any questions you may have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero?
Okay, I'll start. I think it's a great design. The staff did a great job, along with the consultants. On the gateway sign, I really wouldn't restrict it just to the south section. I'd do a gateway sign, the northern section too, off of Broadway. I mean, it's really the northern section that we're specifically concerned about, trying to enliven the space, so I'd do two gateway signs, or three if need be, but for sure I'd do two. Then the alley, I think, is a great idea, although I do think it should be well-lit. I'd hate to sort of keep that dim because it's a little bit dicey in the evenings, and I like the idea of calling it the artery or whatever. I think that's a great idea. And then, public art, I think, is important, and I would hate to just restrict it to, I don't know, just a sort of normal, what you associate with public art. I'd like to see some digital possibilities. I mean, what we're trying to do is make this an attractive place, and specifically, I think we're trying to make it an attractive place for younger people, and I think digital art, whether it's a commercial application where we're in fact, you know, making some money from the deal, or just straight-out art. But those of us that have gone to Asian capitals know how it does, in fact, liven spaces and makes people, I don't know, it sort of gives people energy when you've got these digital displays, so I hope we can come up with some way to actually enhance the digital presence. But overall, I'm very pleased with it. I think it's going to be a shot in the arm for the business community there, another place for people to gather, whether it's in the evening or afternoons, or I think it'll be great for us to hold public events and nonprofits to hold public events, so I think it's a great, great step forward. I think it's a great, great step forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Carpetti?
I have some questions. I love the plans, it's all great. A couple of comments and some questions, and then I'll make some comments. So if you come up, please, Jennifer. Is this okay, Mr. Mayor?
To ask her to come forward?
Yeah, I have some questions.
That's fine.
Yeah, thank you. So, but don't be mean to her.
Please don't be mean to her. It's my staff, I've got to be careful.
We're kidding, we're kidding. You're nothing but a professional, Mr. Carpetti.
It's her anniversary.
That's right, her anniversary. It's your anniversary, then? With the city. With the city. Oh, with the city. Well, congratulations. I'm welcome. Getting back to our business, I'm scared. All right. Just because we're going towards the construction documents, I want to understand it one more time. On the north side, we're raising the drive aisle, right, the street that's going to be one-way. We're raising it up, so it's pretty much level with the sidewalk. So if you have a plan, you can, I saw the barricades, that you can block it and then have events if you wanted to in that, with the area that is blocked right now. Am I correct? Okay. The programming, I like the programming. I want to make sure that we have some programming for families and children too during the day. I saw the, let me get to that page.
Page 31.
21?
31.
31, okay. Okay, mine is on 31, but it's okay. We have the outdoor dining, the yoga, and play zone. We have, what is it, ping-pong table, something like that. And the play zone is like this big chess area, that people can play chess, something similar. So during the day, the kids can use it, and evening hour, you know, young people can have a place to come to and hang out and have a good time.
Exactly. We're looking for this to be a very diverse area. Even now, I was there on Saturday evening, it was around 9:00 PM, and you had folks that were enjoying that area, who were waiting in line for their Jen Korean barbecue and coming out of the theater. So there's definitely potential, you already see that families are out there, and we want to build upon that.
I like the farmer's market idea as well, then you can close the block and, what happens at that time, I mean, on the north side, when you have a farmer's market, you come into the, you pull into the garage, and then you go around, you exit from the other side?
Correct.
It'll be like one-way, they can't come out this way anyway, so it's...
So they would have to enter, if you do go down that street, you would have to then make a right into the garage, and the only way out would then to be exit through the garage. At that point, we'd also need to have additional signage, just to direct folks as well. And as we go through that, we would have to experiment. There would likely be some impacts on parking, since you are cutting off some of that circulation, but we would make it very, we would clearly communicate that upfront.
Okay. On the south side, I think we have a great opportunity to have retail activities for kiosks in front of our garage. But I'm still concerned about that left turn, when you come out of the garage, you make a left turn. This is a very large garage, one of the largest ones, a very heavy one, it's almost across the street from Americana. I think we need to look into improving the traffic flow inside the garage, so they can exit from Harvard as well, or have, because right now, naturally, when you come in, you exit from the north exit right now. You go around and you come out. And if you want to go to Broadway, you make a right, but now, the whole, everybody has to make a left on this one-way narrow street to go down. So I think that would be a challenge in the future, so we need to look into how to improve the traffic flow inside the garage, so they will have an opportunity to exit from Harvard.
Will we be keeping that Harvard exit?
We would.
We would be keeping it. Yeah, but right now, when you come, when you pull in from this, there are two, there's one entrance. When you pull in, you make a left, it's very difficult for the traffic to come from the opposite side and go towards Harvard exit and exit from Harvard. Usually, you come in, you park, when you come out, you exit from the north, one exit that you have on the north side. So I think that would be a little bit of a challenge, because you can't make a right anymore, based on this design.
And we can certainly, as before we prepare any of the construction documents, or while we're doing that, we can also further refine with any pilots internally, just to see how do we redirect some of the traffic to ease some of the...
Have we done a traffic study on this, or not?
Yes, sir. And we do have our traffic consultants here as well today.
So they said it's fine, you can just make a left, and it's going to be all, okay?
Yes.
All right. They're the professionals, so we'll take their word for it. As far as the floor arts, I really like it a lot, they're nice. The overhead arts, I agree, I think we need to have to, maybe on the Wilson side as well, on the south side of Wilson, because that's the entrance to the art entertainment, this Artsakh street area, I think maybe look at that as well, if you need an overhead sign on that area as well, that would be good. As far as lighting goes, I don't know, I don't have that big of a, you know, unless I see it, I don't know if I like it or not, but I, you know, I know that we want to extend that acorn lighting up to the south side, I like that. But as far as the lighting, I'll leave it up to you guys. The alley signs, I like those a lot, the ones that are placed on the building, they're kind of old-school, and they go with the downtown area, it's, it fits within the area. But I think the other public art pieces, I think we need to have maybe some sort of a contest, like we do for our utility boxes, right? They go out and, because we still have time, so we can get ideas from local artists as to what those art pieces should be, maybe we like something, because the one that we have right now, it's kind of confusing to me, to be honest with you.
On page 30, the iconic art?
Or signage.
The signage, it's page 42. They're very, maybe it's too artsy for me, I don't know, but, you know, the Armenians say there is no, your personal taste has no friend, so it's what I like, you know, my colleagues may not like, I also, but I, where it says Artsakh, you know, and it's written in different ways, I think it's a little bit confusing. And whatever we do with the name Artsakh, I think it has to be basically in the same, same, same material or color, because right now, it says, it separates it, when you read it, if you don't know what Artsakh is, you think there are two words, you know, it's art and sock, so I think it should be one word wherever the, this word is being used. So, but I think these are the pieces that we have to have a little contest and find out what the community can bring, like our utility boxes.
Mr. Carpetti, it might ask, do you like the idea of a monument sign, though? Something that's a significant piece, and then that would be the contest? Again, part of this is branding that street, so there's monument signs to say, this is the area, there's...
No, I do like the monument signs, but if this is a very large area in a way, in the future, if you have other, you find another art pieces, someone comes in and says, I want to donate this art piece to Artsakh, and Arts and Culture Commission takes a look at it, council approves it, I'm sure you can find a place to, you know, place another art piece somewhere. It doesn't have to be a monument sign like this, but I like the idea of monument sign, but let's, so today, we're limiting it to monument sign, or there are other options as well?
We're asking you, do you like the concept of a monument sign? We understood that the materials, the colors, even the form...
How many signs are we going to have?
There's two monument signs, one at each end, the markers that are internal to the street, and then there's that ground signage.
As well as the blade signs.
Right.
In the alley.
Okay. No, I like monument signs, but if there, we can tell them that this is what we're looking for, but the contest can say, look, if you have another idea that, you know, may fit in this area, and it, you know, it just improves the program that you have, let people bring their ideas as well, I mean, it's not a problem.
And Mr. Carpetti, and that's something that you would envision, that we would work with the Arts and Culture Commission on their, I know that they routinely do the calls.
Yeah, but the final result will come to council, right? So, and I like the idea of the umbrellas that Mr. Mayor Najari Ambra originally, the one in Malaga, because they never, it never gets old, so that's a good idea. And also for trees, and as far as landscaping goes, we, I think we need to, because shade is very important, I think we need to look into some of the canopy trees. If you don't have here, I don't know the entire palette that I presented, but I think canopy trees are very important, so they grow wider instead of going, growing really tall. Oh, one last question, maybe last, the last question. The performance pieces that we have here, is this going to kind of compete with Central Park, because Central Park has the same concept as well? I mean, if we want to have a performance here and a performance there, do you think we will have enough demand for performances to program it here as well as the Central Park?
I do. Our intent has always been that this would be a complementary use and a different type of use as well, because these would be in the middle of a, hopefully, bustling pedestrian area, you would have these performances that would attract their own crowd, and that would be different than, I think, some of the programming that we've had envisioned for the Central Park block and some of the programming around the Armenian-American Museum. So again, I think very complementary uses, definitely not competitive.
Okay. And the yoga piece, is this something that the city is going to program, or are you going to basically have a business that they, you know, they do yoga, they have that, or how's it going to work?
Sure, so, and not just with the yoga, I'll kind of address that holistically. So we've all agreed that programming is very important to this, and there is a draft program plan that has been presented. Because we have many, not just different departments within the city that do take on some portion of programming, you do have different community groups as well. So one of the recommendations is that we could look at having one point person curate the different types of programming, so that you could, for example, call upon a yoga studio to coordinate some of the yoga. You could also work with Glendale Arts, for example, if they had some elements of, some performances. So we really do want to highlight the different types of artistic and other performances, I guess we'll lump yoga into that, and have one person that can curate that and manage that experience.
And who would that person be, is it an employee of the city, or...?
We have not discussed that. It could be, it could be somebody that we hire as a temporary or a part-time, a part-time basis, whether it's a part-time city employee. It could be something that we partner with an association, perhaps it's something that we could approach a downtown Glendale association, if they would be interested in overseeing a portion of the programming. So there's different ways to approach that, and we have not decided at this point. I think, especially with the Urban Art Program Plan and the update there, and some of the interest that the Arts and Culture Commission may have on this, there's many different ways that we could approach this, and that would be something we would come to you at a later point. But we're, I'm not sure if there's any, if you have any comments or ideas on that.
Yeah, I think it should be someone from the city, for sure. The city needs to make sure the programming is what the vision of the city is. And just having an outside consultant or a part-timer, or that doesn't work for the city regularly, or an organization or what have you, I don't think that's a good idea. I think it should be someone from the city, that the city will know, the management will know, what the programmings are going to be.
Okay, thank you.
That's enough, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Thank you. Ms. Devine?
Okay, well, on the whole, I think it's, there's ingenuity here, there's creativity here, I like colors, that'll be fun. The lighting, I'll leave up to you. I think I've heard that they get it, how much lighting we need, and in order to activate it, that's absolutely imperative. I can also see where the yoga classes are, that we have an art class where we have painters come down, and just like when we had the outreach meeting, and you had one of the local artists sit there and paint Artsakh, and now it's hanging in the mayor's office. So we can always have programs like that as well. I'm interested in signage, and the first, let's see, first, I want to know, on page 28, is there a restaurant, this is where the platform is, in the alley, in the alleyway? There is a restaurant there right now, it's on page 28.
So, right now, that is above, forgive me, I'm forgetting the business there, but I'm not sure, Bradley, you recall?
Which one?
Okay.
Oh, there is a restaurant there currently, so, but in the year and a half, there may be even a better restaurant, right? We never know, but that's a good possibility, and I like that idea. A signage, page 30. And we're talking the gateway sign on Broadway. Is that going across, is it going diagonally across, I mean, because, or are you going to have, I think, I don't know if that's where Mr. Councilmember Quintero was talking about, if you need one on both sides of the street there or not, so that people know that, I mean, you can't, you wouldn't put one sign on the north side and not one on the south side, so that people know that both sides are Artsakh Plaza?
Right now, as proposed, it would be going over Artsakh from the east to west.
So it wouldn't be on the other side of the street?
Correct.
Right, we've diagrammed it on the south side, south side of Broadway, across Artsakh.
Correct. I think it should be on both sides, so that they know that the other side is the same, because otherwise, they're just going to go to, maybe, oh, this side's the only side. Okay, so that's my...
And I think Bradley has some additional comments.
Oh, okay.
I was going to say, yes, that does span over the street. Basically, it's not just one sign on one side, one sign on the other.
Oh, goes diagonally across?
It comes across the street, the concept of the gateway, and that's where, that could happen in kind of two locations, but that would just be one sign that would be in that specific location. What that's shown is the two poles that connect to the ground. Across Artsakh, correct.
That's not bullshit.
I still, I still don't, I'm talking about the north side, the sidewalk, and the south side sidewalk. And you have on the diagram gateway sign on the south side. This is on page 30.
Yeah, what I was suggesting, and I think you agree.
And north.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I thought that that was what you had suggested, and I agree.
So on either side of Broadway?
Correct, correct, yeah. So that they know that both sides are Artsakh Plaza, Artsakh Street. Okay, and then the other one is, and I'm sorry, Mr. Carpetti, but I love the iconic, the artistic concept signage. I think this district, and I don't like these district markers, there's just no, I just don't see any creativity here, I don't see anything that draws me in. However, this, these, the monument signs, I think are terrific. And I think that those are very interesting, and I think those would draw people in. Also, it'd be a great photo shot picture right there, fantastic. And I think that's what we're looking for, something that brings people there for a reason. The other thing I want to suggest is, the name of the street is Artsakh, and so I would like to have at least one of the iconic pieces that the Arts and Culture Commission are going to be looking for. I'd like for it to somehow be representative of Artsakh. And I know we've seen different sculptures, different monuments, but I think there has to be something within these two blocks that brings that message home to people, so that they know a little bit about, you know, what Artsakh is, why it's, why we've renamed this street, or just a symbol of it. I think it speaks to that. And otherwise, it's good, it's good.
Thank you.
Mr. Agaginyan?
I have a problem with Artsakh South Plaza, where, on the north part of it, if you can show it, there's, can you, page 18? Let me show it there on the screen. When you want to get out of the parking garage, there is one lane where I remember at this time, there is two lanes. So even though it's, there is two lanes, sometimes it's very difficult to get out of the parking. And those who are entering to parking to go to higher levels, they're having a hard time to even enter inside the parking. So if it's one lane, I think, I assume will be sometimes when people, they go to movies and other places and they get out together, there will be such a traffic in here that causes the parking to stop and create some problems. I'm talking again about exiting the parking from the north driveway of South, so what we call South Plaza.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, the same.
If you say it, then better. So we agree then. What I was thinking, of course. And then to that, you have one lane and there is a traffic on that street which it's, there is no stop sign for it. They go, so people who want to get out of this parking, they're going to have lots of problems. So I suggest the other side of that plaza, I just go it there and show, but however, I hope our architects or whoever is part of the design will understand, I think the other side should be narrower that this will, the traffic which goes south from Broadway toward Harvard will not impede this one to get out. At least if there is, instead of two lanes, you made it one. And then they have to come and stop and the other side, traffic gonna continue going and these people gonna stay there for a long time. And the distance between where they get out, which shows a stop, and to where those exit bars are, I don't know what they call it, exit bar or whatever, is so close that they will stop in the middle and this stick bar will stay up and forever they will stay there. So I think that should be worked out on that corner. I don't know. Am I clear what I'm talking about? I can come close. I don't have microphone, but I just want to show it. So maybe you'll pay if you don't mind.
We understand what, what you're, what you're suggesting, but we'd love...
I'm talking about, this is, the distance between here and where this stop bars are are very close. And this traffic is going without stopping apparently. There is no stop sign. If you put stop sign, will cause problem for Broadway. If you don't put stop sign, they're gonna go and these people will stay here. And as I said, there, it used to be two lanes getting out of the parking. Now there is one lane getting out of the parking. So I suggest they have to look into it, whoever is designing, to put this side narrower, that this traffic gonna go without causing any problem for this lane. Then later, it can be one lane, but at least in here, they have to work on this diagram. Because those who are coming out of this parking, especially as I said, if they're coming from a movie or anyplace else, they're gonna have a hard time to get out of this parking. And I remember this parking is such that when there is problem to get out, causes problem on this side also. When they want to enter, they want to come here, they go to higher levels, they're having problem all the time. I'm very familiar with this parking. So this corner should be worked out again.
Okay, let's hear from the traffic engineer on that. Did you understand all the points that were raised?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Claire Look Yeager. I'm a principal with the firm of Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan Engineers. We understand the, the concern. What the council member has suggested in essence would be a reduction of the plaza area that is created on the west side of Artsakh. This, there's always a pro and a con, there's always a balance. One of the most important points from a traffic perspective, to make sure everyone understands, is today's exiting distribution of the parking structure is 80% of the exits occur at that north driveway that you were just referring to.
Yes.
Only 20% of today's traffic from the marketplace structure exits via Harvard. There are two exiting lanes today at this northerly driveway. And there's also two exiting lanes onto Harvard. So one of the things our team has looked at carefully with our, our designers during this conceptual level is can we make changes internally to the structure to have a more even balance? Such that the volumes in the future at this north driveway would be decreased so as to minimize conflicts, minimize volume, allow the merging of the two lanes at the exit gates prior to making the left turn to head south on Artsakh. The structure is a little bit complicated. We believe we have several measures to recommend. And keep in mind, with Artsakh today being two-way, you have multiple conflict points. For that 80% of traffic that's exiting, you have the northbound through volume, you have the southbound through volume, and you have the at-grade pedestrian crossings. In the future, with the one-way concept, we've eliminated that northbound through conflict. We still have the at-grade pedestrian crossing and the southbound approach on Artsakh. We wanted to make sure that that traffic is required to stop. So there'll be formal stop lines, formal stop pavement legends, stop signs as well. And it's similar with any other stop-controlled intersection. Per the vehicle code, there's rules of the road and the motorist on the right will have the right-of-way if two vehicles approach at the same time. So we are recommending some changes to address those concerns.
Should she just say rules of the road in Glendale?
Next. I'm sorry, are you done? Are you finished?
Yes.
Sergeant, can I ask a follow-up question?
Yes, please.
The same thing.
Go ahead.
That's exactly what I was talking about, the internal changes that we have to make. The reason 80% exit from that one exit, which is the north side, is because there's a four, five-story structure on top. When you come down, there's no way to make a left, go towards the Harvard Street. That's why everybody's exiting from there.
Correct.
And the traffic, main traffic coming in, I mean, every time I want to get into that structure, even if I'm on Harvard, I don't know why, naturally I go around and exit from the Maryland, enter, enter from Maryland side. So the main traffic coming in is from Maryland side. It's not from the Artsakh, it's not from the Harvard side. So there is a big conflict of this two, two-way traffic going. Right now it's one-way. You come in, go up and park, and then when you come down, you exit from that one, one, one exit. So making those changes are very important because other than that, if the 80% of that traffic comes out from the same exit, then you're gonna have a problem in that area because Friday, Saturday, Sundays, there are, restaurants are packed, there are two or three banquet halls that they use those, those facilities and rent spaces here. And everybody comes at the same time and everybody lives at the same time when there's an event in these banquets. And they're large halls, they hold 300, 400 people. So I think it's very important to make sure, the way I look at it, I have my doubts to be honest with you, but you guys are the professionals, we'll leave it up to you.
We understand the concerns. We will carefully review that. One of the recommendations we've made is also having a pilot where the two exit lanes today on Artsakh are made to left turn only. We would not recommend that during the holiday season. The city staff has agreed. So I'm not sure of the timing of the pilot, but our staff would be out there observing as well. Furthermore, I did want to note that there's, as all of you know, under utilization of the pedestrian bridge, we're looking to minimize and really encourage the upper floors through changing of wayfinding signage, the elevator buttons. If you're in the elevator and you look, there's not a true focus to Level 3 where the pedestrian bridge is located. So we really, it's a full package, off-site wayfinding, better use of the existing pedestrian bridge, higher utilization to decrease at-grade pedestrian crossings, making changes internally to the parking structure to really even out that exiting distribution. We, we need to make sure this is safe and as efficient as possible.
Okay. Mr. Agaganyan?
On page 42, those two monuments, monument, page 42, I have problem with this Artsakh, which is written, written such that in my office, an Armenian can read it. Non-Armenian is having, is as if it's a puzzle. So they have to pay attention to read what has been written. As I said, for Armenians, they know, I mean, somehow they can read it. But for, to non-Armenians, very hard to understand what has been written. Unless we want them to wonder.
I'm non-Armenian, I could read it.
You, because you're more familiar. But they come from other cities, they didn't associate it with Armenians before. They were having a hard time to read what has been written there. I'm just saying what I observed. I'm not saying to change it. I'm just saying what I observed. And the last, I guess, has been mentioned here. Artsakh, there is this famous Papik Dati, which is like grandpa and grandma, that famous sign. Somehow, somewhere should be that symbol presented there, whether it's small or big. I don't know how it should be, but there should be some presence, some sort of presence from that monument, which is in Artsakh, of course, far away from us. But that's it. I mean, this is nice and they did a very good job. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So I agree with the parking structure concerns. I, I agree with Mr. Agaganyan on the stylistic presentation of these monument signs. This is a name that people are not familiar with to begin with and to, looks like you're reversing some of the letters or distinguishing it with color.
Very gay.
I don't, I don't think so. I think we need just a clearer representation of, of that, of the word Artsakh. And Ms. Devine knows about it because we've been talking about this for, for a year or two. And she's familiar, but someone unfamiliar is not going to know what that sign says. I have a hard time reading it, the, the first one on the left of the page. The font and, and all that stuff is a little bit too, too out there for me. As well as the one further on the page where the letters are jumbled and in different order almost. So I don't like those sort of representations. I prefer something a little more clear. Not that it can't have any artistic quality to it, but these really stylistic ones are a little, a little bit too much. I agree. Would we not be better off placing those street signs on the northern boundary and the southern boundary as you're entering from Harvard? Well, no one's going to enter from Harvard, right? Because it's a, it's a one-way.
You can come in and enter the garage.
Yeah, it's two-way.
Well, I mean, you can't drive up Artsakh.
Right, no, you can't.
Anyway, those, I, I'd like to see more than just that one signage across the southern plaza entrance. Maybe other locations would be better.
So what about the idea of having a total of three? To your point, it sounds, if we were to have it on Harvard and at the intersection of Broadway and at the intersection of Wilson, is that, is that?
I'm all for that. No, I don't think it's too much.
No, it's not.
I think if you're driving down any of the streets that you mentioned, you're gonna see, oh, that's... Right. The other item is the, the roadway on the existing marketplace or exchange area is that iconic brick that was very unusual. I don't think any other street in Glendale had that treatment. What are we gonna do with that? Are we gonna get rid of that brick? Are we just gonna paint over it? What are we gonna, how are we gonna deal with that? I do think it, it's important to have a coherent roadway theme on both plazas so people realize this is, this is where I'm going. How are we gonna deal with that?
Well, there, the, if, if I'm understanding you correctly, are you referring to the, the actual, the buildings on the marketplace or the structure?
The roadway, the actual road.
So we, we intend on keeping the roadway.
So you'll have a brick on the north plaza and on the south plaza, you'll have this concrete. Is there any way to create some fluidity between those two roadway surfaces?
So I'm going to punt this one over to...
Do you know what I'm talking about? It's brick. The exchange is brick.
Talking of the street.
The street, the street.
But they're, they're raising up the street where, where the plaza is.
So that's my question, is how much of the brick will remain in the, in the end after you, you raise that center platform up to the curb level?
In the north portion where we're raising it, that will not be brick. We could consider incorporating brick into that if that's something that council would like us to look into. That would be a different material just for that centerpiece where it would be raised up. The idea is that we really treated that as kind of like a canvas for some artistic application as well.
Mr. Mayor, page 32, it shows where the brick is gonna stay and...
Right. So that's my...
Yeah, when they raise it.
So that's my point. Are we gonna do anything with the existing, that's the picture. Are we gonna do anything with that existing brick or just leave it as is?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I could just explain some of the design thinking. We were working with, trying to maintain as much of the street as we could. And we thought that brick was interesting. So we're trying to keep as much of that brick as possible. So as you can see, in the area where we're raising the street to curb level, because we have to regrade that area, we were gonna put a new kind of paver down there, something really very high-end, a tile or concrete kind of paver. But our intent, if I was to go, is to maintain as much of the, the brickwork on this side of the street as possible. There are elements of brick on the south as well and we're maintaining those as well. It won't be totally contiguous, but there'll still be landscaping and other elements that will tie the streets together.
Okay. All right, fine. Thank you. And that's about it. I do agree that it'd be great to bring some elements of Artsakh iconic, icons from Artsakh to somehow place in there. I mean, you wouldn't have a street renamed Paris Street and not have, you know, some reference to the Eiffel Tower or the Champs-Élysées, the Arc de Triomphe or whatever. So I'm sure the artists can look up on that, see what the icons are, the iconic features and sculptures and vistas perhaps, and then incorporate that somehow. Not as an overwhelming feature, but as a, as a teaser as to what, what is going on in Artsakh.
And just to clarify, so you would envision that for the, some of the monument signs, for example?
Could be in the monument.
Or the, the public art.
You could incorporate it in the public art.
Either or.
Or the monument signs or, or anything of that nature. Okay.
Just have one follow-up question.
Okay, we gotta get rolling, folks. I want to remind everyone, we have a long closed session. We have an item in front of us unless we want to continue the hotel discussion to, after the holidays.
One, one last question, just a follow-up on your question. Maybe the architect can answer it. On the south side, page 32, when it says Artsakh Avenue, right after that, there is a, it shows, is it a new brick or it's? On the south side?
On the south side. Is there a new brick?
Page 32.
Let's let me move over to that area. Are we talking about this, this page here?
I know, I know.
There, there is one, page 32, if you go to page 32.
Yeah, I'm not, this one here.
Yeah, see where?
This area?
Yeah, the, the roadway, yes.
The roadway won't be, won't be brick, but the sidewalks are, currently do have brick in them.
Okay, right after the Artsakh, what is the, when it says on the, on the street, when it says Artsakh Street?
Right here.
Right after.
Left?
Oh, here.
Left.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Right there. What's that roadway? Is that brick?
This is an existing stamped concrete.
It stays?
And we're keeping it, yes. That's right at the crosswalk.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Second. Okay, move the item with the recommendations.
Second. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I do need some clarification on some of the pieces, just based on, and the one piece being the contest. We do need clarification whether council wants us to go down the path of a contest for the monument signs. That's something we need clarification on. What other items would you need? The other items in terms of elements of art related to Artsoc, I think we have enough feedback on that. Understanding the monument signs needing to be a little more clear, I think we heard that from a few council members. So we have clear direction on that. We didn't hear anything on the digital signage.
Anybody else gonna join my digital campaign?
I second.
All right, we have a modern artistic type.
So we do need some clarification on at least those two.
As far as the contest for the monument signs, there could be all local artists that participating in that. Same thing with the utility boxes that we do. So we still have time. Otherwise, who's going to design it? Because we didn't like the design that basically we had. And who's going to design those monuments?
Fine.
Ms. Devine?
I think those are much, much too important to hand over. I think we need an artist to do those. I think a contest for a piece in this, on the street is a great idea, great idea. But not, I think the monuments have to be more, I think I'd like to have them professionally done.
Yeah, but who?
Well, that's for the arts and culture and for the consultants. I mean, they have fantastic taste. That's what they're, that's why we hired them to make these kinds of decisions. And I think that we should leave that up to them and the Arts and Culture Commission. And then, but, as I say, I think to have a contest for artwork in that's permanent...
Professional artists will not participate in a contest? Professional artists will participate in the same contest gladly and bring their art out?
And we would have the final say.
Yeah.
Right, council would have the final say on any of those proposals.
On every item that goes even to the Arts and Culture Commission ultimately would come to the city council for approval.
Well, we need some consensus on this. I think that's what the city manager's...
My motion is to have a...
Contest for the entrance signs, the monument signs.
The monument signs, yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, would the council be agreeable to put that into that package that we work with the Arts and Culture Commission, and actually have a call for artists to do those monuments?
Like the utility boxes.
I want to make sure that we not, we did a contest of a mantra, too, but...
We're not sending it out in the Thursday folder.
What Mr. Garpetian is asking, we'll roll that in with the other three elements and work with the Arts and Culture Commission. If you like the marker and the street, perhaps those, we can work with a signed professional to change color or whatnot. Or if you want those to be artistic pieces, we can wrap all of them.
Okay, so what's your proposal, Mr. Garpetian?
Let's have all three of them in artistic pieces. And if you don't like them, then there's always a, you know, we can go back to a sign company and have them build those signs, the wall signs for us. But as far as these iconic pieces, when you have a contest for such a project, I think all the professionals will participate as well, so.
So there's three iconic pieces, the monument signs and the monument signs. Those are the basic. So you're saying do all of it as a call for artists, or just do the iconic pieces as the call for artists?
Okay.
Or the marker signs and ground signs?
No, marker signs and ground signs, that's not one. I'm talking about this monument sign.
Right.
The iconic pieces as well. The iconic pieces is what you're referring to. If you talk about Paris, you have to have Eiffel Tower. Iconic pieces as well.
So there's spots for three of those.
Right.
Throughout. So you're saying do the monument signs and the iconic pieces?
Iconic pieces, yes.
Okay, that's your suggestion.
So it would be, it wouldn't be a contest. It would be a call, as Mr. Lansafame said, where the Arts and Culture Commission would go out with an RFP and a call for artists.
It's not a contest, then.
Correct. Call for artists. Just clarifying.
So are we okay with that?
I'm okay with that, if the Arts and Culture Commission...
Okay, convict them and go through it. Okay, so that's where we are on that. What else remains on?
Just want to make sure.
I have no objection to a digital art piece.
That's the majority of the council, then.
Okay, so that's part of the direction. Anything else out there? Okay, so that's your motion, incorporating those items.
And incorporating all those which we recommended.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Ms. Beer, so, no, in all seriousness, it's 4:35. We do have a closed session, several closed-session items. This is a rather significant project for us. I'm not sure how long the presentation is intended to be.
Presentation that staff will be giving you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, is not long or lengthy. And I'm not sure what the applicant, they're saying it's going to be pretty short.
Because last week, we went straight through, and I got to tell you, at the end of that meeting, even though it wasn't super late, I wasn't the sharpest knife in the drawer.
But I think we can get through this since...
Because we went straight through. We had a 10-minute break before council, and I don't think it's fair to, my colleagues did not have the proper...
I would like to postpone item number two. So I want to say something. The item, which is about this, the Indigo Hotel, I would like to postpone this. We are not going to make it.
Okay, so let me ask, is there any reason why this should go forward today and could not be continued to a date, January 14?
14. Our first meeting at this time, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, in the afternoon, does have a couple of items of significance on there. And I would say adding this would also jam that afternoon up for us. We do have two items that afternoon.
What are those items?
One is the Simarusti project, 620 North Brand, stage one. The other is the urban space from the Glendale Galleria that is coming back, related to the design review item. So this would be then a third item that would be added to the 14th, and I believe...
That's, I don't think that's gonna work.
No.
Because the Simarusti item is gonna be also, is a weighty item with...
Correct.
That deserves time for, I don't want to cut anybody off. I don't want anyone to be sitting here, you know...
Why we don't move the items from 14 to 21 and put this on 14?
Can we bump one of those on the 14th to the 21st and put this in its place?
It'll just continue to, and in no way am I trying to provide feedback that's contrary to the council.
You've got a large construction project?
We do. We then have a Nike store mural design that's coming on the 21st, along with a design review for a medical building on Broadway on the 21st. Again, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we will, we can push these items by a week, meaning in January. It would then push this project three weeks out, and it's completely up to the city council.
They have to postpone this.
Well, postponement is better than denial, right?
Sure.
So let me hear from someone from the applicant, just to hear your thoughts, just on this bumping you out three weeks.
Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff, I heard clearly your last comment about postponement is better than denial. We'll take the postponement. But we would ask that it be, you know, a date certain as soon as humanly possible. We have our team here. We also have a schedule that we're working under with IHG and our franchise agreement. So anything that could be done to move us back quicker would be greatly appreciated.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Mr. Agajanian?
How many people are here for that project?
For our project?
Yes.
We have this whole road here.
That's why we have to postpone it definitely today, if you have that many people for this project.
I wasn't gonna let any of them talk, though.
So we will ask something, and they will answer. So it will take such a long time. Maybe we have to stay here until 14.
I think, if I could give my opinion, I think the applicant would be better served to agree with our continuance to January 14. We'll bump some of those other projects back. We'll put you first on the agenda, and we can go through it and give it all the due diligence that's required on both sides.
That seems fair to us. That would be great. Thank you.
Not a problem.
So, Ms. Beer, so, Mr. Quintero?
I want to note that Unite Here Local 11 is also in the audience, and they, I assume, plan to speak. So maybe that'll give the developer time to meet with Local 11, which I think is very important to the city of Glendale, its residents, and the idea that we're looking for living wages in this city. We're not looking for minimum wage jobs.
So can we move the schedule on the 14th to let this project be first in line, and again, not have a super...
Yes.
Extended afternoon session?
Yes.
I mean, the Nike mural and the medical building design, I think, would take a lot less time than this or the Simarusti.
Yes. We will definitely make sure to balance that out, and we'll have them first up.
So this will be...
Any motion to continue to January 14th at 3:00 PM without further public notice?
Okay, and that's your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Devine?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Agajanian?
Yes.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
And that's all we have on this agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
I call to...